Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bridgette, our mission statement, please.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you. Bridgette, our roll call?
Steph?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
I'm here.
Kyle?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And Sheri is absent of notice.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We are going to change our agenda. We will be removing Item 8D, so that what will happen is E will then move up in place of it. So we will have a changed agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. A changed agenda.
I motion to approve the agenda with the amendment or the change of eliminating 8D.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Brian, Mr. Wensley, any comments or anything you need to?
Yes, we've had two resignations. One that came late last week. Frank Orlando, the JV basketball coach for the boys resigned. That posting went out today and will be out for seven days at the end of day Monday. Just so the board knows that likely the boys' season starts Monday, the 15th trial. So there may be a day that we don't have a coach for the trials. Stephanie Witowski, which you approved at the last board meeting for childcare, has resigned due to personal situation. New hires, JV girls' basketball, Jeff Kraschowski. He was a previous basketball coach. His work schedules previously did not allow him to coach and he had to resign, but his work schedule has been adjusted and he was the candidate that's right here. Actually, the basketball base of the candidates that applied only had one. Christopher Baba is a notice appointment. He is the girls' seventh grade basketball coach. He's a current teacher in the district. There was one question. No questions regarding the minutes or any changes to the minutes. There was one question Ms. Vashana gave to you in your backup. There was a question on the claims and accounts as far as Semitry Energy Solutions, previously with CenterPoint Energy Solutions. There's a press release I attached to it that shows the name change and their acquisition of the other companies. They are basically a third party that negotiates and locks in with their buying power, the sale prices for natural gas to get us in its lowest, our lowest rate possible. So that's all the questions that I have.
Thank you. Anything for the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will have a lineup date.
You're with us tonight.
Dale.
Dan Jerome is here. Dale was the last one. Dan is here for Richmond Associates. Jerry was unable to attend from OAK due to a family situation. Just give me a second just to pull up the bond for the presentation. So tonight, we're going to talk about the upcoming baseball, softball, field renovations that are scheduled as well as some other improvements.
Yeah, well, Brian's pulling it up. It's nice to be here in person. Last year, when we were working on the design for the auxiliary gym and the other projects, we were doing everything virtually. So this is the first time I've actually been here in person tonight. So as Brian said, we're updating you on the remaining work that's going to actually happen next summer. And the one package that's out for bids currently are the improvements to the baseball and softball fields. And we're going to give you an update on that this evening. So we go to the next slide. I assume you're all looking at these on your laptops.
Sure.
Good. Can I do it from here? Yes.
Clear.
So this slide is just an overall site diagram to show you what is going to happen next summer. We'll start with the areas in orange because while a lot of paving projects were undertaken this past summer, there is still work left to do. I love the new drive around the elementary school. The fact that the parking is on the right side of the driveway now has a great improvement. But you can see the areas in orange, including the main road north-south, the parking lots behind the middle school, and the drive that comes around the west side of the campus will all be repaved next summer. We are doing improvements to all three sets of baseball and softball fields, including the varsity baseball field, which is east of the football stadium, the junior varsity baseball field, which is south of the drive, and then the softball field south of the middle school. We'll start with varsity baseball. And each of the fields that we're working on is getting new backstops. I want to share those with you. We work with the coaches on the options when it comes to backstops. Now you have some options. It doesn't have to be just a chain link fence like they used to be. And the solution we came up with is the netting photo that you see. This is an example of another installation, very similar to what you'll be getting at all of your fields, all four fields, which is netting with base pads down around the bottom. And that was one of the issues where we went through this with the coaches and they liked the ideas that the base pads had that protection there, but also would give you an honest bounce off the backstop. The varsity baseball field will also be getting new dugouts on both the home and visitors' side. And we are infilling the, with a concrete pad that goes all the way around the backstops. Currently, you have like two little bleacher pads there, and we're just going to infill that whole space behind the backstop in concrete as part of the project. Junior varsity baseball, again, new backstop, same solution, the netting up top and then a base pad down at the bottom. Home dugout and visitors dugout again. Our home dugouts all do include a storage room. So a little storage room at the end of the dugout. It's the place for equipment to be placed. We do have to adjust. There's a sidewalk on the south side of the drive. We have to wiggle that around the back of the new dugout that's there. There currently is not a scoreboard on the junior varsity baseball field, so there will be a scoreboard as put in place. We'll replace the foul line fencing that's in poor condition currently. And we do have an option to replace the outfield fence. Wasn't part of the project originally, but we want to give you that choice. So we're going to get a cost on that as part of the bid process. And then you'll have the option to consider whether or not you want to replace that outfield fence on that field. Softball's exciting. When we looked at your current junior varsity softball field where it was placed, actually, it was on the first slide. I skipped over it. But we wanted to make sure that at the middle school, there was space to potentially expand that building someday. And right now, your junior varsity softball field sits right where the logical place would be if you ever had to add some classrooms onto that building. So rather than invest dollars into a field that might someday need to be removed, we are relocating and actually building a new field just west of the current varsity softball field. So the new field obviously will have new dugouts, netting, the same backstop and netting solution, new infield, grass, everything above the field is brand new. So that, we think, will become your varsity softball field. I wonder what he's done because everything there is going to be new. The JV field doesn't, you know, that current varsity field is actually in very good condition. We are going to obviously put up new backstops and take care of that. There's a little bit of grade that needs to be done in the one, I think it's the right field that floods. So that is all part of the project for softball. We actually do have an alternate to install an irrigation system to the outfield of the new, what we think will be the new varsity softball field. So this is our timeline. As I said, the project is out for bids right now and the bids are due on Wednesday. Is that right? Yeah, Wednesday. So after the bids come in this week, OAK and our team will go through the process of evaluating the bids and reviewing the bids with the contractors that submit the lowest bid. And we expect to be back, OAK will be back here with a recommendation for award at the next meeting on November the 22nd. As we said, we'll start working on the new field as soon as they can in the spring because that field is currently not utilized. The other fields, obviously, we have to wait till the end of the season to jump in there and tear down the old dugouts and backstops and things. But the work will be worked on through the summer and should be complete in early September.
Two things I'd just like to add to the presentation. The current varsity field dugouts will remain. We did not remove those, which will now become the new-
And softball field.
Oh, excuse me. Softball field, thank you.
Yes.
That's correct.
Because those are new.
They are relatively new in the big picture and what we were going to replace them with is almost mere image of that. And by moving the varsity field like we proposed here, you know, there is more scope than what we originally planned in the bond and with things, you know, we, so we're trying to watch your dollars and so forth to make sure both fields have equal facility and access. So that's the first thing. And then Dan had talked about in the very first slide, I can go back here, the pavement. That bid package won't go out until-
January.
January. So that pavement package will come to you, everything in orange will come to you at a later board meeting, probably in early February. But as you can see in that one, that's a, that's a lot more pavement than what we tackled this summer. The difference primarily is we're not really rebuilding a whole brand new parking lot.
Right. This is more of a removal of the existing pavement and replacing. And then the reason for not bidding that with the rest of the work is that contractors who do asphalt for a living, they don't want to commit to this is the price of asphalt in a long term, you know, a year and a half away, because they don't know. So we typically want to wait until we're six to eight months out from actually doing the work to bid that type of a package. Prices go up and down in that industry quite a bit, so.
So barring anything that comes in odd on the bids, our plan is to bring you at this point the recommendation toward the contract at the November 22nd board meeting.
Correct.
Softball and baseball fields. More questions?
What are the dimensions of the new softball field? Just as little beginning.
Yeah, it's similar. We talked to the coach about this. As you can see, it is, you know, a little bit smaller than the current softball field, about 10 feet shorter. The outfield fence is a little deeper in that kind of honey shape. We're kind of pinned in there, believe it or not. There's a swale, a low spot that everything drains to back there. You can kind of just see the ghost of it in this diagram. And so the grade starts to fall off pretty rapidly there. So we did work with the coach to make sure the dimensions were adequate. You know, they recommend 200 feet down the line. We have 190. Talked to them about this. Anything above 180 is okay, but the recommendation is 200 feet and we're at 190. It just, with that low spot over there, we couldn't get any more than 190 feet that we had.
Straight up left field, but shorter than the line.
Yeah, that's the dimension I'm talking about. I'll check that. Different. But I will check that.
My same question. The parking, when I was looking at that picture, the parking at the varsity baseball field that I've asked about for a couple of years?
This parking?
And yeah, are we putting in-
That lot was never in the original scope. However, the gravel that they're putting in, and correct me if I'm wrong from what we talked with, the gravel they're putting in for is stained so that it becomes more of a gravel parking lot rather than a paved parking lot. It wasn't in the original bond scope.
But I vividly remember conversation and Jerry standing there a year ago when I asked about it again, that they, we were going to work to get that in there. So we're not, does anyone else who was on the board then remember me asking that question and being told that that was definitely something that could be-
Needs to be done. It's a muscle.
So we weren't part of the treaties, yes?
Yeah, I'm talking, what I've been talking about for at least two years, if not more, is the parking spot that people just drive in there and park all over the place where I think that should be spaces that are more handicap spots, grandparents watching games, coming to games, not even to walk this far. And I can go back and look at the meeting when Jerry said-
I think what he had said was that we would, if we had surplus.
Oh, I don't remember the word surplus.
Saying at the end, if there was extra that we could talk about.
In the elementary parking lot, we did designate to get them close to the JV spots. I'm going to call it after-hours handicap for those to get them closer to JV, but-
Well, I guess my question is if we're doing gravel, why can't we do concrete? What's the, what's the price for it? And you know that it dismayed me that it was never part of the conversation when, I mean, at least I have been endlessly talking about it.
I can get with the team to get the price.
The rest of the table too. I mean, I just, Angela, I don't remember the surplus conversation. Could have been. I remember a big old smile saying that that would definitely be something we could-
Why don't we get a hold of it and see where that puts us?
So just so I'm clear, there's a temporary road that we constructed during construction. It's actually the little red line that goes up from the, from the drive to the varsity baseball field. So-
That's the area that she was talking about, a parking lot.
And we're not looking at a big parking lot. We're looking at a- Well, I'm looking at a parking lot that fits all those cars that jam themselves in there every single day.
We just have to be cautious how far, if we can do it, how far we go because we use that area to the right of that for the discus. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
I'll get with the-
But it doesn't matter that we use that for the discus because people park there and get in the way of the track team, all of that. It happens every time. I was strictly talking about handicapped spots. There are older grandparents that walk a long way to come to that varsity baseball diamond. There isn't any reason in all of this that we're doing that we couldn't put some kind of parking in there. Please, and asking and asking.
I agree. If you're going to do gravel, you might as well do some of that because especially if your goal is for those handicapped or more elderly people, you're talking about they are going to walk on rocks. It would be better, safer for them to be walking on the concrete. I agree. So if we're going to do gravel-
I'll get them to get a price here, but there's also other things we have to look at, like storm retention, depending on the size of it and so forth.
And I-
All the under the ground stuff that nobody sees. So when we have our next bond meeting, we'll talk about it and see if we get together a rough estimate based on the size of it.
Okay, I'm writing it down this time because I have to-
I remember.
Two, three, seven, eight, two.
Any other questions? And just so the board knows, the fence is going to be fixed. It got damaged in the wind at varsity prior to, several weeks ago. It will be done before the season starts in September. We are getting effects. It's a manpower time for the contractor to do it. So look at it. All right?
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on now to our presentations. We're going to do, our first one is fiscal year 2021 audit.
Do I go ahead and hit that computer?
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening, the Board of Education. My name is Jennifer Watkins and I am the principal with YOONYO. And we were out this year to perform your independent audit. You received a couple of things tonight, probably have them by PDF and hard copy in every which way. You have the heavier punch is your financial audit, and then you also have a single audit. So the single audit is over your federal dollars. I also like to mention that if you have findings, which you did out, which will be in the presentation, but anything like that is usually in the back of that single audit report. I always like to mention that to boards because I feel like they're hidden back there, what they're required to be back there. If there was any, we would point them out to you though. If you have questions that come up during the presentation, I'm happy to take them. If you have questions that come up after the presentation, I'm happy to take them. I'm happy to take questions at any time during the year. Sometimes things come up, you might have questions. I know sometimes without Sammy or the trainings and presentations throughout the year, but if the board has questions, we're happy to answer any of them at any time. So the first slide, we're just going to go over kind of what the district is responsible for with the audit and what management is responsible for. The district is really, these are your financial statements. The numbers are the districts. We come in and we're really giving that auditor opinion. We're giving you that third-party look, that independent look. So you, we're not there to monitor, we're there to look at the design of the internal controls, assess them for risk, and then check those accounts and do testing over compliance to really give you an outsider perspective. The kind of the whole point of the audit is the opinion, and you do receive a clean opinion, that's your independent auditor's report. It's called an unmodified opinion. And basically what that says is that the opinion is free from material misstatements, that last sentence. And what that basically means is to me, is that we look at materiality, which is the level of a dollar value, and we get it down to a low enough level that the board, management, or even the public would feel differently about anything that we possibly could have missed, like we've looked at everything well enough to be sure of that. Overall, your audit results, you had no material weaknesses noted, no significant deficiencies. So both very good. Sometimes we're asked if we express an opinion over your internal control structure, which we do not. That's a different type of report that like claims processing and things like that have that kind of report and we just don't. But we always are looking at internal controls. It's kind of like the basis, baseline of what we do. Because you receive over $750,000 of federal dollars, you did receive a single audit. You are considered a low-risk auditee, which means we have to test at least 20% of your overall funds. This year, we did CRF coronavirus relief funds. We looked at those for the single audit. And with that, you had no material weaknesses and no material non-compliance noted. There was also no fraud or abuse noted in your single audit process. And this is why, just to show kind of what we do as an audits, I definitely am not going to read this to you. A lot of it, people say, I can't believe that's what you do for a living. I enjoy it, but it's a lot of numbers, a lot of testing and reading. But I do like to point out at least that we do a level of unpredictability. A lot of times with an audit, a lot of what we do every year, we do the same thing. We're checking bank card installations, we're checking your fixed asset schedules, appreciation, things like that. But we're always trying to throw something different in there every year, just switch it up. Sometimes we test for bids and undercutting the threshold to see if something did come to the board that should have, looking for like duplicate vendors, things like that. This year, we did a lot with the extra funding with federal funds addition to the single audit to make sure there wasn't any commingling or double dipping of those funds. So I just like to make the board aware of that. This year, we did adopt a new standard that got accepted last year, and that was GAZB 84. That was for the student activity funds. So those used to be, they were always included in your financial statements in some respects. But GAZB came out and likes to change things, and now they're included like a special revenue fund. So they're like your food service fund now. And that was the only big change. The other GAZB that came out didn't change anything too significantly. A few other things to note, so in your large report, you don't have to get it out, but there is a loose letter in there. That's called the governance letter. And we just like to note a couple of things that's included in that letter that we think is important for the board to be aware of. I always think it's funny because I'm like, oh, there was none, 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 none. But I do like to mention this because I could let you know if there was any of these issues. So in that letter, we talked about that there was no disagreements with management, no difficulties in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, and no audit adjustments. And then no other management comments. Well, sometimes we have management comments if like small non-compliance issues come up or things like that. So just overall, you can tell that the audit went well, like we weren't waiting for things an undue amount of time, or sometimes we think if we can't find something, like where is it at? That would be something that would be a difficulty, but we had none of those. And especially no audit adjustments. First, if you have material audit entries, that leads to material weaknesses. It's kind of automatic, which you don't want, just kind of creates problems. But that also means that the books and records were adjusted and in good order when we got here, and that your business office is running smoothly. Plus, they definitely can't do it all in a week. So they're keeping track of it well during the year because it's a lot to prepare for an audit. We're going to go over just a couple snippets of the numbers, and these are included in your financial statements as well. The balance sheet, this is as of 6:30 2021, so it's kind of a snapshot of that. And this is section four of the large reports. Your total assets, and this is for the governmental funds, is $31 million. And you can see the most of that amount is included in the 2020 capital projects funds and a smaller amount is in the general fund. The non-major funds, that's made up of all the smaller funds, mostly food service and the student activity fund. Grab my letter. I talk really fast. I do like to mention here, you can see most of it's in investments, $24,000, and that's all restricted unless it's, on the next page, you'll see it's incomes payable as well. But those are for the projects going on, and then all of that money is restricted, cannot be used for other things besides that capital project fund. And general fund, it's mostly in cash and what's called due from other governmental units. So since this is as of 6:30, there is, that's AR or accounts receivable for like state aid for July and August or other federal dollars that have been spent, and you're waiting to receive those monies. The flip side, the liabilities and the unbalance, as of 6:30, you have summer pay. So the majority of payables here is either state aid note, and then related payroll payables is most of what's there besides a large payable, which again is for the body projects. Deferred inflows of resources is kind of a weird term, but that got created a few years ago because again, GAZB likes to make new standards. But that's really that 60-day rule in school district accounting, and if you don't receive the funds within 60 days after year-end, after June 30th, they have to be called a deferred inflow of resources. So most of the time, that's a receivable that you're waiting for from- So most of the time, that's a receivable that you're waiting for from the federal government. Because you can't spend, you have to spend that money before you can ask for it. So sometimes there's a lag. Overall, in fund balance, your total for general fund is 1.2 million. And then the rest altogether is 21.8 million. But you can see, other than general fund, everything is either permitted or restricted for a designated purpose. A comparison on this slide, it's general fund to budget. Wait, you can see original budget, final budget, actual. You had a final budget for an excess of 97,000. You ended up with the excess of 507,000. There's a note there that there's a budgeted excess for 20,000 in the next fiscal year. The difference there, you see both are under budget, revenue and expense. The majority of that is your federal dollars. There was a lot going on in June, at the end of June and July, we were barely able to keep track. We're up to, I don't know how many ESRS now, I do know. But it seems like they keep coming out with new ones. And at the end of June, they were changing the rules. I think they actually changed them July 15th, which can't go back and amend your budget after June 30th. So it's just very confusing of what you can spend. And some of those grants, if they're approved in the fiscal year, the state likes you to have that included in your budget. So, and those are dollar in, dollar out. So if you have the federal dollars budgeted for in revenue, you're going to have it for in expense. So I just like to mention that. Okay, a couple of paragraphs, not too many. But just to look at the figures a different way. For your revenue, obviously, state and local, that's your state aid. And your property taxes are definitely the largest majority of revenue that you receive. This year, the federal did creep up a little bit because of those CRF funds and all the ASR funding. Expenditures for this, we're going to show them in two ways, one by function and one by object. Your instruction and support together make up about 94% of your overall expenditures. And this is only for general funds, just to point that out. If it was like the fund funded, it would all be kept out late, but this is for general funds. And then by object, for salaries and benefits, that's about 80% of your overall pie. And for services, that's 11%. We always like to point this out because employee benefits, obviously, you're in the arena of paying people to teach people. But the employee's benefits is a large portion of the amount of dollars. We checked that UAAL, that's the unfunded portion of the mixers plan. And we're looking, we test that from before when we implemented GASB-16, GASB-75 a lot for your net pension liability and your net OPEC liability. And this is kind of a slide to just show that rate and how much it does affect the overall expenses. So 42% in 2021 of every dollar paid to a teacher went to benefits. And that's only including mixers. This isn't for FICA or HALLS either. And that difference between the blue line and the green line is that unfunded portion that you receive in state aid and pay back out.
Jennifer, that's for any employee, not just teachers, correct?
Yes, sorry, yep. Any employee that's included in the Michigan, yep. So anybody who is in that purchase service or contract service, yes. And the next slide is a tenure enrollment analysis. It's just kind of nice to see, it's kind of when you look at your fund balance, sometimes it correlates directly or indirectly to your enrollment. Obviously, when state aid is your largest portion of what you are paid through revenue. And with that fund balance, so a tenure analysis of fund balance as well. And then you can see it's up slightly in 2021. The state does require that your fund balance is above 5% when they look at it compared to unrestricted revenue. We have a slide, I think it's the next slide. Yes, that gives you your ratios. So in 2021, you're at 9.55%. That's the one the state has changed. They used to look at the fund balance as a percent of its expenditures, but now they're looking at it as unrestricted revenues. But they want to make sure that's above 5. So you can see in 2021, it was pretty close. And this year, it's getting up to a bit of a healthier fund balance. But again, that fund balance is hard because it is a snapshot. It's like everybody's banking account at home, that's just where everything landed on that date. But that's kind of the rate that they watch. That's one of their financial stresses to make sure that they're not asking for more reporting or more. One thing we do check as well is a lot of compliance issues. And they have a whole manual, because I sit on the committee that writes it, for compliance things. And I think there's another report every day, probably that you guys do. So if that falls below that 5%, they're going to ask for more reporting and extra things from the business office. So if it can be above that, that's always a good thing. Definitely a good thing to keep that above that 5%. And that's all I had. I want to thank you for your time. But if you have any questions in the report or the PowerPoint, I'm happy to take them.
Let me just add before question, I just want to remind the board, last year was a unique year. There was a lot of grants that were available to us. And we did everything we could to take advantage of those grants and charge any expenses to those grants, which would free up general fund. And if you recall, when we reassigned staff during some of those, like for food service or for transportation, those expenses didn't get charged to general fund. They would now be charged to the grant or the food service account, which helped our bottom line this year. Now, going forward, I don't know any more ESRS for schools on the dock, but that's not.
And ASR was very rare that they let you do that. Normally, that's a big, they never let you do that.
And so as the rules came out and adjusted, we did whatever we could do to make sure we were maximizing. So the last thing I want to say is, thank you, Tammy, your team. Unbelievable, you make this easy for me, but I know it is a lot of work. And when you guys look at the budget or the claims and accounts every month, that's where all these expenses are being charged as you're just looking and reviewing that budget. So Tammy, thank you to you, Judy, Angela, appreciate it. I don't know if there's any questions?
I guess we're good.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on. Our next presentation is our instructional spotlight.
Well, I am going to be here today with our three wonderful principals. We have Mr. Castle, Mr. Martell, and Miss Van Gundy here with us. And they're going to be going over their building-specific state assessments last spring. I'm going to be going over our year-to-year trend data to get us started. Notice that in the data, it is from 2015 to 2021. And also, there is obviously not going to be a spot or collection for the 2020 school year because all state assessments were waived. So third grade, we're going to start with ELA and MSEP. You can see the trend data. Third grade was above both county and state averages. Fourth grade was slightly below county and below state averages. Fifth grade was above county average and slightly below state average. Sixth grade was below county and state average. Fourth grade below county and state average. And that is for the MSEP ELA. For the MSEP mathematics, third grade was well above county and state average. Fourth grade was below county and state average. Fifth grade, above county and state average. Sixth grade, above county and state average. Seventh grade, above county and slightly below state average. And that is for MSEP mathematics. This is our social studies MSEP. And we only do social studies in grades five, eight, and 11. So grade five was well above county and state average. Grade eight was slightly below county average and below state average. Grade 11 was above county average and slightly below state average. Science, this was the first year the science force counted since there changed our testing, they need three years of a baseline before it begins to count. So this is going to be our baseline data. Fifth grade was well above county and state averages. Eighth grade was above county and slightly below state average. 11th grade, we are below county and state average.
I find it ironic that we start collecting and measuring during the middle of a pandemic. But it sounds good, so.
That's great baseline data, by the way. The next set of data you will see is PSAT grade eight. And this is the year-to-year trend. Grade eight in evidence-based reading and writing and math was above county and below state averages. For just ERW, which is the evidence-based reading and writing, we were above county and state averages. For math, we were above county and below state average. Lastly, is the SAT. Both evidence-based reading and writing were below county and state averages. For the ERW, we were well above county average and state average. For math, we were below county and state average. And just some of our district initiatives, this is the kids we have. Notice that this is not cohorted data. So this is not what grade three is, and then grade, how they do in grade four, and then how they do in grade five. This is just each year at grade three, each year at grade four. So that is to be considered. We have some goals that we're doing at the district to be able to help increase some of these scores is strengthening our district MTSS process. We have process and procedures coming together to reducing student absenteeism. District-wide professional learning series, every building is doing the Danielson framework, which is one of the first times we've done that as a district, is having district-wide PD ran by our lovely principals. And strategies outlined in our district improvement plan as well. I would like to welcome up Mr. Castle to go over the high school-specific data.
All right, you're good. Thank you, Ms. Zara. I'm here to share with you the high school data from last year. Like Ms. Zara said, this is unusual because we aren't missing our normal sequence of testing because of the pandemic. So we'll try to fill in the blanks here where we can. So where do we get our data from? The data is reported for the spring 2021 SAT, PSAT 10 and PSAT 9. And then we go back to the fall 2020 administration of the PSAT 10 SAT and PSAT 8. Those are tests that are traditionally given in the spring, but because of the pandemic, they were pushed to the following fall where those students took what tests they would have taken the previous spring. So they did get the same amount of tests, they just got them kind of out of sequence and out of the normal timeline for them. The spring 2019 PSAT 8, 9, as well as our MSEP from spring of 2021. We'll start with our graduated class of 2021. These are our students that graduated last spring. And this class took the PSAT 9, the spring PSAT 10, and then the fall SAT instead of the spring SAT. So they took the SAT, the fall of their senior year as opposed to the spring of their junior year. So they had that kind of influx there. Their results were, we had 105 test takers. We had 18% that met both the math and the EBRW, which is the evidence-based reading and writing benchmark score. We had 56% met that, and then 18% met the math benchmark. And this is where they stacked up compared to the state and the total group. You'll see in all these, you see the school and the district together. They do it this way because there's a lot of districts that have more than one high school. Obviously, Richmond High School has just one, so that's why our school and our district are the same. So you can see where we stack up there next to our state and then the total group test takers. And on to our senior class of 2022, which are our current seniors right now. This class has taken the PSAT 9, the fall PSAT NMSQT, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. And then they took the spring SAT, so they did take the spring SAT last year. The results were there were 106 test takers, 23% met both the math and the EBRW, 61% met the EBRW by itself, and 24% met the math benchmarks. And again, this is where we stacked up compared to the state and then the national of the total test takers. The spring 2020 SAT results, there were 102 test takers, 22% met the math and EBRW, 61% met the EBRW alone, and 22% met the math benchmark. And again, this is where they averaged out, we had 102 test takers. We had the very similar numbers as the previous tests that they took. This is where our senior class stacks up, just a victorial here. So same amount of data, just a visual for you with both benchmarks, the math and ERW compared to Michigan, to Richmond, and the national standard.
Mr. Counsel, can I ask you? I just think it's important as he's going over this data, not every state requires all students to take the SAT. So there are states that only students that are going to college are taking it. And you're taking that group and putting into a state, you look statistically, and you're testing every student, statistically, your scores will be lower than just a select group of kids taking. So just keep that in mind as you're looking at this data. I'm very proud of what our staff is and what's being done. And we have ways to go to improve, but just remember that as you're looking at this.
Yeah, nationally, we had, I just read it, there were 23% less students took the SAT last year because there was no requirement for them. So the students that you got that wanted to take them were traditionally our higher achiever students that took it in other states. This is an interesting graphic, it just kind of shows you the normal sequences that take the PSAT 8, 9, the PSAT 10, and then the SAT in order. So College Board does this great predictive scoring for us. And you can kind of see here that it was very hard to do predictive scoring. And they kind of even acknowledged the fact that there was such a gap in their instruction that the students weren't able to kind of have that fluidity. So they predicted that the students would have a certain score here. They would predict that they went all along here. And they exceeded our benchmarks, the PSAT 9 and the SAT, which is our current senior class. And they exceeded the benchmarks for the fall 2020 PSAT 10 NMSQT as well. So we're very, guys, very proud, like Mr. Wong said, of our senior class because they've really had a very disjointed high school for years, as you think about it. They came in, they had their normal freshman year, and then for them, it's been different levels of chaos over the past three years for them. So we are very proud of what they've been able to accomplish. This is again, if you're showing the same graphic in regards to our math growth. We did not make the benchmark for the fall 2020 PSAT. The benchmark was 510, and we came in at 453. Same class, we have lots of data on our senior class. This was our MSEP results here. The dark blue on the top is the advanced proficiency. The lighter blue is the proficient. And then the light orange is our partially proficient. And the dark orange is our non-proficient. On the left, you can see where Richmond High School is, and then on the left, Macomb County as a whole. So very similar in our numbers of how we stack up to the rest of the county as far as our science MSEP for last spring. The next one is our social studies. And again, on the left is Richmond High School, and on the right, Macomb County as a whole. You can see there, we got quite a few students in the proficient. And then again, a significant amount in partially proficient. And those are students who may have missed a proficient by a question or two. So what we do is we go and examine the data and see which type of questions they missed. And then we adjust our instruction based on what they missed. And we analyze that and really try to fill in the gaps to see what we missed or what they may have missed in order to get them to that proficient level before they graduate. For our junior class, our current junior class of 2023, they took the PSAT 10, the PSAT NMSQT again, so they took the same task essentially twice. And then they took the PSAT eight and nine as a ninth grader, or as an eighth grader, I'm sorry, or with middle school there. They did not take their traditional PSAT 9. For spring last year, the NMSQT, there were 110 test takers. 15% which met both of the benchmarks, 59% met the EBRW, and 15% met the math benchmark. This is very similar to the PSAT. This is very similar to the PSAT 10, but the NMSQT does have a few more elements that are more challenging for our students because they are competing for a higher scholarship level on that. That's the big difference for the NMSQT. Here is on the same test where we stack up compared to the state and the total group on that NMSQT. That is an alphabet soup, PSAT, NMSQT. That's a lot of letters roll off the tongue. Again, for our junior class, they took the PSAT. So again, this is not the NMSQT. Later in the year, they took the PSAT 10. I know, it's a lot of tasks there. By the end of this, they were very, very good, filled in bubbles. Had 107 test takers, 14% that met both of the benchmarks, 60% that met our EBRW, and 14% that met our math benchmark alone. And again, here's where we stacked up compared to the state and the total group of test takers on that. And like Mr. Wandsley said again, not everybody takes this. You see this compared to other years, there's quite a few fewer students that took these tests. But we are very proud, we had 107 members, which is the overwhelming majority of our class that took these tests. For our sophomore class, our current class of 2024, this class took the PSAT 8, 9 in the fall, and then the PSAT 8, 9 in the spring. They took the exact same test twice. So we had 115 test takers, 27% of them met both benchmarks. 63% met our ERW, and 28% met the math benchmark. So you can see here, we averaged 844 for our district. The state average was 874, and the total group test taker number was 885. That was the first time they took it. Now we'll look at the second time they took it. So 110 test takers this time. 38% met benchmarks the second time around. 69% met the ERW benchmark, and 40% met the math benchmark. And this was interesting to us because what we're doing, we're kind of looking at it and see what students met or didn't meet the benchmark the first time, and analyzing what they did or didn't do to meet it. So we're looking at attendance data, we're looking at grades, we're looking at all sorts of things, time that may have spent online quarantine, or what the factors were that really affected our student learning during the school year. It is kind of interesting, although it was very troublesome for them and very tiresome for them to take the same test twice. It is interesting from a data standpoint to be able to have that information. So here we are again, 864 compared to the 891 and 898 for our state and our total group averages. So what does this tell us? So after examining all of this, what we took out of this as a high school staff is despite the loss of instructional time due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the class of 2022, our senior this year, continues the growth in the area of EBRW, meeting and exceeding the expected growth of benchmarks. The class of 2022 has not met the expected benchmarks and showed minimal growth in math on the PSAT 9, 10, and the SAT. So what we're taking from this is that there's a need for in-depth examination and analysis of our math curriculum, instructional delivery, and supplemental materials. One of the things that we noticed with our science and social studies is we have a change in scope and sequence in line for our science department as well as new textbooks for our science department, or I'm sorry, for our social studies department. We're very excited to have their hands on those. It's going to take a couple of years before we really have enough data to be able to analyze this. We want to make sure that we've got seven years' worth of data and not jump to some old stat conclusions before we make any big instructional decisions.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Castle, I appreciate everything you're saying there. When we're talking about, there's a need for in-depth examination and analysis of the math curriculum. And you want to have, which I just said, three years or something like that. But the reality is, we've been struggling in math at the high school for a very long time. So what else are we going to be able to do before you get on there in three years' time to improve what our kids are getting in math?
Sure, and if I misspoke, I apologize.
No, I'm missing your spoke, I'm just...
The time for analysis would be for the science and social studies.
Oh, okay, did I misinterpret?
No, it's because the science is the baseline data, and we just received the new curriculum for the social studies, the new textbooks. So that's where we're going to really take the time for analysis.
Okay, and so then what are we doing with math?
What are we doing with math? One of the things that we've examined and we've talked about with Ms. Era is really the scope and sequence in which we're in the order in which we're teaching this, and making sure that we're doing it in an order that best represents ourself on our standardized tests. Because what we've noticed over the years and now in analyzing this is some of our higher achieving students that are taking the algebra in the middle school, by the time that they get to the SAT three and a half years later, a lot of that, what we found is that some of our very highest achievers, our highest academic achievers, are not scoring at a level that is appropriate for their GPA and their knowledge base because it's been such a long time since they've had this. So what we're doing is, what I've encouraged last year and continue to encourage, is making sure that we're looping that back and bringing that back into the curriculum and kind of sprinkling it throughout. Really again, looking at our SAT prep course and making sure we've identified the right students that are for the SAT prep course, and making sure we get a curriculum in there that is going to have a positive effect on our math scores.
Okay, but for all our math students, not just the high achievers that haven't had it in, like they're 10th grader, 11th grader, they haven't had it since eighth or ninth. We're right, you're talking about your high achievers. What are we doing on an everyday basis for those that are, for those that are taking math? Because I appreciate, and I get what you're saying, but the reality to me is there's something else missing here. So aside from what we're doing for our high achievers, what are we doing in our math department to have our scores be better for everyone?
Well, it's not just math department, this is one of the things that we're doing for all.
I know, but I'm specifically asking about math. Because in here, there is a need for in-depth examination and analysis of the math curriculum. So that's what I'm asking. You just read it.
Mr. Castle, I talk about what you guys focused on in your PD this past one, that domain two. Because I think that's going to, what you guys started at this year's conversation, and had said in the past, but really this year focusing is getting to the crux of what your, I believe your question is you're asking.
What is the crux of my question that you think I'm asking?
To make sure all kids have the best instruction to have the best opportunity to score.
That would be the crux, yes.
All right, so to get that best instruction, what is your staff doing? What we did last Tuesday.
Well, sure, one of the things we did last Tuesday was we spent whole staff professional development really focusing on Danielson's domain two and making sure that our teachers are setting the table, for lack of a better term, making sure that they have that baseline understanding of what our students need, how to deliver that instruction to them, how to analyze what those students are getting, and making sure that we're going back and delivering it to them. But what it really goes down to is making sure that our teachers have a relationship with students, that our students know that our teachers care about them and their instruction, more importantly, not just personal. You're not going to have a great relationship, who cares? But she's got to understand that I care about what I'm teaching her, why it's important to making sure that we're able to deliver that instruction to her.
The domain three specifically goes into the instruction, which is our next plan PD. It's all spread out for all the different domains of the Danielson framework.
For this year to gear towards the test-taking, we're going to be doing this...
We are also looking at a district-wide curriculum list for all the math programs and the list of all the supplemental curriculum to be able to see our curricular gaps, to be able to analyze those. And this also goes into the district MTSS process. I think that high school could definitely use a little love in that department of how to, some professional learning, differentiating instruction, and being able to get some supports in place for those struggling math students, not just the high achievers.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's also very important that we identify which students are coming to us early with gaps in their math instruction. Because what happens is we're getting students that are too far along in the process, especially over the last year, because we haven't had them in front of us to really identify and put those remediations in place. So that's one of the big goals that we've been working towards, to is having all staff identifying those students that are struggling early, and again, getting into that intervention process early.
Thank you. How do we sequence right now from the middle school? As far as what are they taking?
There's a couple of different levels. They're taking...
If you run the general math or the...
Well, they start in seventh grade, it's algebra one, algebra two, geometry, statistics, analytics, we're starting with, and then AP Calc.
Calculus, AP Calc, stats.
If I start in algebra one, a ninth grader, I go algebra one, geometry, algebra two.
So I asked this question, why do we do that? I've asked that question since I was principal.
And that's what we're looking at. Because that's the same question we're asking in the scope and sequence.
Yeah, it causes us some issues in our testing as well.
Even in those kids coming from the middle school, and where do they fall when we put them into classes because of what they've had at the middle school? And then that does go back to those middle school kids who have had algebra one and algebra two in seventh and eighth grade. Now in junior year, which how many questions on that SAT are algebra?
Significant portion of those.
Significant, and they don't, they haven't seen it. So, okay, I just want to make sure that's what we're checking.
That wrapping around the thing Mr. Castle was talking about, and that scope and sequence, that's what we're looking at. And that's part of the...
We feel like there's a real disconnect between what our kids have shown that they know and what they're able to show they know on that one day, three-hour test.
Yeah, okay, cool, thank you.
Next up is our middle school principal, Mr. Bartels.
Good evening. As many of you know, this is one of my favorite topics, data. Love to look at it. Ms. Era talked about our scores overall, and I'm going to go over a little bit of that as well. I'm going to show you what, a little bit at the surface level of what we do when we get our data and move forward and what it means. So when we look at, this is our M-Step, and it's all five grade levels, from fourth grade to eighth grade. We have, we want the blue and the light orange, if you will, to start rising this way. And we want our dark orange to go down as we venture through the middle school. This light orange is partially proficient, which is at or near the proficiency. So they're close, they're within that close range. The red, or the darker orange, if you will, are concerning areas. So when we look at our fourth grade last year, we have 44% that were not proficient in math, and that's concerning. And then the same in fifth grade. So what we do with that information is we break it down to see why is that? And what can we do about it? So I will say, and this is not an excuse, and we got to figure it out, but when fifth grade was our beginning year in the middle school, you would naturally see dip in scores from transitioning to a new building, transitioning to a different, you know, a different style test, so on and so forth. If you look at the research in the scores across the county, across the nation, most schools dip in the sixth grade because most schools are K5. So you're going to have that dip, just like when kids go to the freshman year, there's usually a dip from the PSAT to the PSAT 9. And that's a transition thing that happens everywhere. So when we look at this, we want to take it one step further. So when you break down the data, this is one part of, and it doesn't have the eighth grade here because the eighth grade isn't a PSAT, it's not M-Step. But what you have here is math communicating and reasoning sub-score. So you have all these different subscores or different claims that our students are supposed to have in mathematics. And so we can see for this, our orange goes away as we move through the school. And when you add our partials with our proficiences, we're getting more to where we want to be. We're not there, but we're more to where we want to be. Then math problem solving, modeling, and data analysis. So that first slide I had up there was how we're doing overall. And then again, these are the claims or the subscores sections of what mathematics is and what they're testing. So here again, we're not doing terrible, we're close or at, and our orange is going down. But what is concerning to us... is this. This is math concepts and procedure subscores. So this section of the M-Step, you can see with this orange here, is a curricular issue. It is a gap in our scope and sequence or in our teaching and in our instruction. It's not a talent issue, it's a knowledge issue of what we're after. We've met with our fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade math teachers, and we broke this math concepts and procedure sub-score down to the grade level standard to know exactly why is it that we have this pattern? This is definitely a pattern, this is not a one-year thing. This is something that needs to be addressed. So we've broken down the test, broken it down to the standards and the concepts, math concepts and procedure subscores. And we are focusing our lessons, our well-work, our MTS, our tier structures of support, to make sure that we're addressing these math concepts and procedures, which are interpret, analyze, compare, explain why, apply your math. So this is deeper level math, and this is 50% of our score. So if this is 50% of our score, that's why we're close, but we're not to where we need to be. So this year, our goal is really working in addressing math concepts and procedures. Now, here's how we are compared to statewide, so on and so forth, with mathematics. And you can see that 11% of our fourth graders were proficient, and we're way behind the state and county average. Again, we're going to address this, and this will be not the case moving forward. But this is, happened to our fourth grade in reading as well. This group, if you remember, this fourth grade group came over and didn't test as third graders. Usually the M-Step, kids' first test is in third grade. So these kids went through virtual, didn't have the test, and came to a new building. So then, if you look at our fifth grade, we're above the state and county average. We are, if you go back three years, we are one of three districts to show growth in fifth grade mathematics. So that's why I say it's not a talent issue because these fifth grade students had these fourth grade teachers during the pandemic year. And then last year, they had these fifth grade teachers. So these students were also second in the highest percentages of mathematical growth in the county. So they performed extremely well compared to where they were two years ago or three years ago. This PSAT math, PSAT is a lot tougher of a test than the M-Step. It is more rigorous, it is more of that apply, it is more being able to use your math mindset and skills. These eighth graders, when they were fifth graders four years prior, were below the, both the state and county average. They were below the county average by nine, and they're now only below the county average by two. And they were, or they're above, sorry, were above. We were behind by nine, now we're above when they were in fifth grade. And then we are three points below now, we were seven points below. So from fifth grade to fourth grade, this eighth grade group now freshman improved quite a bit. Okay, ELA, same concept. We look at those that are advanced and proficient and those that are partially proficient. These are the ones that are close. Here again, that same fourth grade... Here again, that same fourth grade group with English, and besides this outlier here, this trend is going in the right direction, whereas this trend is going in the right direction for, for scoring and improving over time. Now with ELA.
You can just click on it.
Okay, with ELA, we did the same thing with math. Where are we at and where do we really need to improve? Where's our critical area? Where's our critical gap? And so our fourth grade content, we have two of them, 53% not proficient at the reading aspect. And then we move it here. When we look at writing for fourth grade, we're at 49%. So we've met with the fourth grade ELA teachers and all really signs, everything, because reading and writing across the curriculum, that we have to address this. And we're doing a lot more short book writes this year, a lot more summarizing what we've read, exit tickets, explaining what we did today in a lab, so on and so forth, to pick up on the amount of writing we're doing in class. Same with fifth grade, 42%. And then we go to sixth grade, right here, 51, and writing. And then we look at seventh grade, again, writing, 51. Now, and we're addressing that critical need first, I mean, we're addressing all of it, but that's where we're focusing a lot of our attention and our school-wide initiatives. PSAT, eighth grade, again, a tougher test. We're ahead of the state and county averages. When this eighth grade group came in in fifth grade, they were behind the county average by 15% and they're behind the county by 14%. And now they're above both. So on a more rigorous test, over their course of four years, they've improved quite a bit. This is that again, here's where I was saying, I was just talking about the PSAT, where we're ahead of the state average and the county average, eighth graders. And then our fourth grade language arts content, where we can compare RMS to the state. And Ms. Ara touched on some of those. The other data we look at a lot is our NWE data, and we, these are also tied to standards where we can find out, you know, these are the RIT scores, and these RIT scores are where students are at and where they're ready to learn. If they're ready to learn, that means they don't, they don't know it, that's where they're at content-wise, and where do we need to take them? So each of our grade levels here in NWA math, last year from 2021, met their growth targets. And all of our, our staff and teachers were effective with their growth targets, and those are the RIT score increases from fall to spring. And here's the reading norms. We do the reading test in social studies class, just to emphasize, you know, reading is the key. You don't just read in ELA class. So we do the testing in social studies and set our goals in reading and social studies. And there's language issues, which is, which is connotations, grammar, how do we, how do we use the language? And you can see the growth from the fall to the, to the spring. We, we're proud of a lot of things, but we also know we have work to do in other areas with a continuous growth mindset with our students.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How long have we been doing the standard-based grading in the middle school?
This is year four.
And do we have any stats on whether or not that is an improvement from how we were grading before compared to now?
We haven't had a reduction in, like, our national junior honor society members, we haven't had a reduction in our honor roll recipients, academic achievement awards at the end of the year, we haven't had a reduction in that.
What, if you don't mind me asking you, what, how does a student qualify for honor roll? Do they get, do you count partial proficiency or is it all? Because I feel like it's a struggle. You don't have two kids that have gone through the middle school, and you can be partial proficient and a teacher's telling you, you're doing okay and technically passing, but you're not actually proficient in the subject. You might be just under.
Right.
And then how would you know that you are 100% proficient? Because the advanced proficiency and the proficiency also seems to not be consistent. So I'm curious how are the students able to gauge when they need to improve or work more with this grading system?
Right.
It seems to be a struggle for.
Yeah, it's also a tough thing.
Yeah, it might be, you know, for some. One thing that we found in when a lot of high school students come back and talk to their teachers is that it makes the student more aware or they own where they are within the content versus, I got to be in math, here I know where I'm proficient, okay? On these 10 standards, I'm proficient, I don't have to worry about. Now these partial ones, I'm not where I need to be, so I need to put in more work and communicate with my teacher. That two-way street back and forth between the teacher and student is crucial, because it's, it's just more of a communication of more specifics of how you're doing in the class. We've gotten good feedback from the students in the high school. You know, with the eighth graders exiting, you know, being that first group coming through with doing so well on the PSAT where they did on the gains that they made, I don't think it's hurt them. We, we think it's working. Now, one thing is, that is a struggle, but it's, we're addressing it this year in our PD, not only instruction, but proficiency standards and scales. So our math department, everybody's sitting down and saying, okay, here's our rubric. What does it mean to be proficient? What does it mean to be partial proficient? So all of those, some are ahead of others, those that have been with us for the last, you know, six, seven, eight years, but anybody that's been with us the last two or three that weren't part of the process to switch over are getting it, but it's taking over the time.
Okay, and also as far as in the middle school, do we in any way grade homework? Or is there any arrangement for the students to understand that once they come into the high school, that late assignments could affect grades and like the responsibility? I just, I feel like the middle school may need some help as far as preparing the students for their high school transition. I know there's many students, at least that I've known, that have struggled once they've made the transition, just getting used to the new grading system and the demands of the workload and that, because it's not, you know, I, I know you don't want to do it when we go from third to eighth grade, so you can't standardize it through the whole middle school.
Right.
Like the seventh and eighth graders, is there a way or something we could look into to get them a little more prepared for the responsibilities that's going to be involved once they get high school?
Yeah, that's always a struggle philosophy-wise with a lot of people, from parents to educators, regarding homework being part of the grading. Because what we're focusing in on is what do you know and what can you do versus what have you done, the responsibility. So in our SHINE grades, we have homework grade. So those that aren't getting the SHINE grades, they're getting a two or three, they're not doing all the homework. So that, that becomes a philosophy issue between parent and child, you know, but if, if I'm getting 100% on my tests and I do well academically, I only need to do five homework problems versus 20. You know, is, are we grading them on the routine or are we grading them on what they know and what they can do? And that's just a philosophy issue. But the high school credit classes follow high school grading, maybe 20.
Has there ever been any consideration, I guess this is something we could all discuss, of whether or not standard-based grading is something? I was already on, in a part of the district when I joined the board, and it's just something that I'm still confused by as a parent, to how to help my child and understand where he needs assistance and reinforcement from home with that grading.
Would it help as a, I'm sorry if I interrupted, would it help as a board if we sat down and put kind of a refreshery kind of what we've done, where we're going with standard-based grading?
I would appreciate that.
To kind of, as a collective group?
Because I think, I think you have great questions, but probably in the line of what we're talking about here doesn't quite fit, but I think the questions.
I would agree.
I think that would be a really good idea.
Other question?
That's it. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
And lastly, we have Ms. Manguni from the elementary.
And this is Manguni's comment, again, just a point I would order, my, the state assessments that we get, we don't always get in a timely fashion to do something immediately with the kid, it's usually a day late and a dollar short. So, but we do take it, as you see, and then look at that data to make sure that we are trying to find trends, finding my gap analysis, et cetera.
All right, good evening. I am going to be speaking on our spring 2021 testing results. First, I'd like to start with some celebrations. We were notified through the Macomb ISD that Richmond third grade students in both ELA and math M step were one of only three districts in all of Macomb County that increased their scores despite being in a global pandemic. So I think that's something to really highlight. Also, if you're familiar with the Read by Three law that I'm sure was brought up here many times, we're proud to say that we had no students affected, you know, or retained and held back because our, all of our third grade students at the elementary superseded the cut score. So we'll start with the good news. And then where does the data come from? So as I, as I spoke about, we're going to do some M step data diving and then also NWA. We only have the third grade for high stakes testing, just based on the grade levels that attend. So first, we're going to take a look at our third grade ELA. So as the other principals have spoke about, we're looking to be in our proficient and advanced proficient, and that's what the state recognizes also. So we have 22 students, we had 22 students that were advanced students proficiency, and then we had 28 that were proficient, 32 that were partially proficient, and 31 students not proficient. Now to look at mathematics. In math, we had 21 advanced proficient students, we had 33 students that were proficient, 29 students that were partially proficient, and 23 students that were not proficient. And we're going to do some comparisons here, so this makes a little bit more sense. When we look at a comparison against the state and the ISD, we fall at 44.9% proficiency. The state was at 42.8 and Macomb County was 37.9. So I'd like to point out that we superseded both of those. So great job to all involved there. So third grade M step math comparison, so our math scores, we have 50.9% students that were either advanced proficient or proficient. The state had 42.3, as you can see, and then the ISD 36.8. So again, in the middle of pandemic, we superseded both of those. And now we're going to talk about NWA reading data for the fall of 2021, so this was just taken here about a month ago. What we're going to look at is the students that are in 80th percentile or higher, and then we, we break it down to students that are in the high average and then students that are in the average. So I'm not going to read all the numbers because you can see them up here, but I'm just going to kind of click through, and then I'll take any questions that you have. So that's kindergarten, and this is first grade. We have second grade. And then again, third grade. Now we're going to move to math NWA data. Again, that was just taken just a little over a month ago. So as you can see, the students follow the three different percentages. First grade math NWA. And we have third grade, and just, just looking at our third grade because they are the ones that do the high stake test for the first time. The NWA does a great job at correlating their potential success on the high stake test, and you can see here it correlates with, with what we get as well. So this is another piece of data that we do get three times a year that helps drive our instruction. And then a theme that we've kind of had at me this year that we focus on is we're calling it leading the rebound, and so we're doing a few things to continue to raise student achievement, that's our goal. So we've been doing our PDs, as you've seen, you know, on our days off, or not, I guess, students' days off. And so we've been working on the different domains. I'm really excited, the next one that's coming up is going to be the meat potato, so the instructional piece. So we're also restructuring our MTSS process that's looking at the different tiers and our students' needs. So when we look at those not proficient students, we, we've restructured our Title I eligibility process to make sure that the students that need that help are the students that are actually in front of our specialists. And then we are also, we've created a district and school improvement team. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Click it back over to you, they should automatically pop over. I like what it does on.
Magic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on with our presentation. We just need to take a few minutes here to look at the instructions on our superintendent evaluation, which I sent an email out this week to start the process here because December's going to be here pretty quickly. If you look at this, we need to, I, we're going to follow the instructions on our, the document that is in Brian's contract. So we need to look at number, if I'm on page, well, I'm on the instruction page, number one. We have to determine any additional factors that we are going to consider in his eval. If you turn to page eight of his evaluation, which is component seven, there are a list of one, two, three, four, and five items that we could pick or choose from. We did ask Mr. Walmsley to have some goals, so he will be presenting us information the night of his eval of where he's at and what he's done with his goals. And so we need to take a look at, is there anything other than that one item that we will be looking at on page eight? There is attendance there if we want to, but I don't know if with the COVID and everything from, you know, May or whatever, but we could, he could get us some attendance numbers if we wanted them. School improvement, I don't, I'm not, we talked about, Mr. Walmsley and I talked about that, because of COVID, I don't know if they've really had a chance to look at school improvement and make any kind of substantial progress on that. So is there any other item on there that we want to look at? Just goals?
I'm okay with that.
Just the goals?
Works for me.
Works for me too. Okay, so Mr. Walmsley, we will just only be looking at goals on that section when we do your eval. I've already sent out the email to you, I'm asking you that you complete it and fill it out as per direction two, we're going to puddle that through. One other question for the board is. One other question for the board is, would we like a separate meeting to do his evaluation? A special meeting or a separate? Or would you want to do it on December 13?
Well, the only way we'd want to do it on December 13 is, we've done it before. We've done, no, we've done the second meeting in November, and then that one meeting in December is when we discussed it. No, well, yeah, talked about it, but then we voted on it because there's the whole contract and all of that. And there's issues that come up with the contract that that gives you the two weeks' time. So if you do it just on December 13, that's the only meeting we have in December. And so if there are issues or conversations about anything to do with the contract, I'm not coming after December 13. Where it's, it's time for the Christmas card, so.
So do we want to meet on a special date? Or do you want to have? I need time to collate and put everything together, so.
And if we did it on the 22nd, you would have two weeks. This is two weeks from, two weeks from today that we always got the, the evaluation. So you had two weeks to put your stuff together. Correct. So you do it on the 22nd, and then you have two weeks from the 22nd to the 13th. It might be a little longer than two weeks that you, then everything is set for that meeting that has to do with the evaluation, has to do with anything with the contract.
I'm, or president of mine, in my seven years, I've never missed a board meeting on the 22nd. I have a family issue that I will not be at that board meeting.
That's why we talked about it.
Okay, well, that probably should have been said before.
I know. I'm sorry. And that's my fault.
And saying about how we do it. But then if that, if Brian's not available on the 22nd, then sometime between now or the 22nd, something like that, because.
Can we do like?
You have to do it on the 22nd.
The following Monday, just a special meeting to do his eval, the contract.
And then that's two weeks.
And then two weeks later would be the December 13th, which would be then would vote.
Has everyone been trained on the tool, on the board?
The only person who on this board that hasn't been involved in an evaluation project is Bridget.
No, my question was, has everyone that is sitting at this board table been trained on the tool? That all of the, those of us who have sat here before have gone through the training?
Correct.
You can't conduct a superintendent's evaluation if you haven't been trained on the tool. That was my question.
I haven't been trained on this tool, but I feel very comfortable doing it myself because it's very close to the teacher one, and I've done multiple ones of those. So I, I don't have an issue doing it. I know Sheri went. Who, did someone go with Sheri here?
I did, but I had been trained before. We didn't do the.
So the only other two would be Danielle and Bridget. I have no problem if they want to sit down with me.
You can't train them on the tool. You weren't trained on the tool.
Well, then we'll have someone who was trained on the tool.
I'm just saying, that's not how it works. To be trained on the tool, you have to be trained by someone who has done the training.
Well, then we have, we have three of us then that haven't been trained, but I don't feel like I need training personally. Any other questions?
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not done with mine.
Okay.
When's, when's the training going to be done for the two people?
Is it a board member? Can a board member do that training? Okay. Well, then I will check with either Angela or Sheri because they had the recent one to get Bridget and Danielle done here before we have the 29th.
Yes, because God forbid they would have me do their training, the one that's had the most experience with that. And who is a trainer?
Excuse me. Any other questions?
So we're having a special meeting on November 20th.
That is correct. To strictly do the evaluation of the contract.
And the training will be done prior to November 29th. And we'll all know when everybody's been trained, so we're not, we're all on the same page.
I will make sure everybody gets notified.
Beautiful.
Okay. And that's all for that. Then we have our board policies. Mr. Walmsley?
I'm going to summarize the policies. It was in your packet. If I go back too fast, please slow me down. I know each of you at EDHAP has, has had an opportunity to read it. The first one for the board to consider under the first reading is 2501 electronic board meetings. It states when a board can have electronic board meetings. As we've known in the past, statewide emergency orders or local state, obviously, you can have them there. But if you look in the letter C of that section, it talks about permissible reasons for individual board members to promote military duty and medical condition against statewide or local disasters. And then there's procedures. This was straight, taken from the regulation of TRN law, which is the company or the attorney firm that does all of our board policies. And then it talks about if we, the notifications, et cetera, like we would do at any regular board meeting. Board policy 2505, board committees. It talks about referencing 2501, which is board meetings. It adds those if applicable, the, the electronic meeting policy once approved. Otherwise, that's really it. There's not a whole lot of change in that, just more of referencing the electronic policy as well as the original. Board policy 3102, smoking, tobacco, narcotics, drugs, and alcohol. Now references dealing with CBD on school property and the potential of using the possession of such on school property. So it just adds that to our already drug and alcohol policy. 33 to 3118, the Title IX sexual harassment policy. This was originally, if you recall, when we first adopted the policy, this was written in response to a lot of the information or situations that were done at the college level. And since that time, it took effect on August 14th, 2020, and going forward. So since that time, there's been some adjustments, there's some language adjustments, as you can see in the, in the blue and the red stripe through. There's some date adjustments recommending. There's in terms of who's an investigator, decision maker, appeals officer, and any other person designated to facilitate the informal resolution process is also now referenced in here. You can see in the policy as you go through it. The district Title IX coordinator would now be the HR person, which would be Jamie and Tammy. The reporting of sexual harassment is regarding the, again, it's the notification that we have to follow, the timeline, et cetera, responses to it. There, there's some things that have, some title changes, like one E or E1, I guess it should be, is how the district responds without deliberate indifference, or we have to, if knowledgeable, we have to do something in responding to the sexual harassment in here. And I'm trying to find the exact one, but it talks about the informal resolution. That was in the policy, but was later on in the policy. It's been moved up as, so once you notify, have been notified of the allegation, there is a process to do an informal resolution, and it's been elaborated in terms of what we can do to try to get it to be resolved, this situation. If not, it then defines the investigation process and what we've done. We have followed this policy in recent situations that we've had to address. So that's Title IX. So you can see on the one title, there's quite a bit of the informal, it's stricken out there, but it's moved up to the front of the policy with some additional language. There's just references, you know, there's some specific policies, numbers that are removed because it just is, you're consistent with the district policy that it deals with any type of sexual harassment. I think that's it from a summary perspective. 3306 is construction bidding. This is language that deals with when you're bidding using the State Aid Act funds or the federal funds that we have. There's some, we have to comply with our purchasing policies, which is in 3301 subsection D. It's really, we don't, for those funds, we have not hit that bidding threshold, but if we did, we have to follow it. 4108, union activity representation. There's added two sections to this one regarding if someone wants to initiate, create, et cetera, that this talks about, we, we're not going to interfere with any labor management organizations. It's their right to, to have a collective bargaining group under parent. And it just talks about, it references the use of public resources to assist the labor organization collecting dues. That's been prohibited for years. We don't use, we don't use our business office to collect dues. That's an organization, a tool for each bargaining unit. They have to do that. 4112, extracurricular employees and volunteers, just a subject. It says that any extracurricular employees, which would be like Schedule Bs, or volunteers are subject to volunteer, have to be, have some type of background check, whether it's an I-Chat or the formal volunteer process. Volunteers in that aspect. Student expression, 5101, just incorporates into what we consider that students may be disciplined for when we're dealing with speech that constitute hate symbols, but include, you know, symbols that are associated with hate speech and hate organizations. 5106 is a brand new policy. It's dealing with transgender students. This is something that as a district, we have, I think, mostly at the high school level, we've had to deal with Mrs. Borg. It's been a, probably a champion of this from the perspective of we've had, she and I have worked closely on this. But how we operate as a district when we have the situation and what we're going to do, and it just outlines. So this is the one, is the new that I would ask board members to make sure, you read closely. And if there are specific questions or anything that you need prior to me recommending for the approve on the second reading, that I'd be able to get that information to you. Because it is new, and this is waters for our district that though we've dealt with it for years, it's becoming more of a public issue that we're dealing with it, and we need, want to make sure that we are protecting everybody's rights in this situation.
Brian, what was the number on that one again?
5106.
Okay. They're just not around here. Okay. There, it's here.
5202 deals with, it's under the student discipline policy. There was some cleanup language in terms of how to report if you, from a student perspective. The Title IX coordinators are corrected. If you feel that it is regarding a discrimination and a disability, that would go to Mrs. Lashbrook, who's our director of student services. So it's cleaning up who the contact people are and so forth. Not the main policy or the language is pretty much, it is the same throughout it. 5708, do not resuscitate orders. We had an initial policy because this really was a result of, I believe, a legislative, legislation that took care of it. Basically, we had what was in red. The recommendation is that we are going to honor if we have on file, do not resuscitate orders, and the process that we will deal with is a little more detailed in the policy than what was originally there. And obviously, in this situation, we want to make sure that we are in compliance. So one of the policies talks about, or one of the statements in there talks about if we have this order, to make sure we're consulting legal account. So to make sure that we are doing what we are, what we're required to do by law, as well as honor the, the request of the do not resuscitate orders or a physician ordered for the scope of treatment. So not, not I'm one, not had to deal with this, but with every policy, it's, it's situations that are coming up that we may have to. 5710, student suicide prevention. Basically, it adds to the policy what we currently are doing. Beginning this year, our student ID badges had to have a hotline, either national, state, or local suicide prevention hotline on them for students in grade six through 12. We also send home information as a letter at the beginning of the year, posted on the website, and provide age-appropriate instruction and professional development regarding suicide prevention for our staff, which is something that we, we're going to, we need to do and build in. But it just puts into, into our policy what is currently law. And that is it for the policy updates.
Brian, we usually, this would be two weeks or the next meeting. So you're not going to be here. Would we do the second reading?
My, my plan is to have either Tammy or Renee or Jamie, one of them's here, but I will be on the phone.
Oh, okay.
So I will be able to answer questions. I mean, I won't physically be here, but I will be here to help and assist if there are any questions that maybe not be able to answer.
Thank you.
But if there's something that, that is more pressing that you want me to get ahead of time, or at least I can easily help or remember for policies.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I need, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I motion to go to closed session to consider material as exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to section 8H, otherwise you can open the exam.
Do I have a support? Any discussion? Ms. Bridget. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri? Whoops, I'm sorry, she's absent. Danielle?
Aye.
Did this wrong. Margaret?
Aye.
Bridget? Angela?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
Okay, at this point, our motion carries. We are going to go into closed session. Okay, we're going back in, oh, closed session at 9:43. Okay, at this time, we have public comments. Since the last board meeting, I have not received any emails from the public. So at this time, any person who wishes to address the board, please step up, sign in, and state your name. You'll have three minutes to address the floor. Are there any public comments?
Does, does?
Hi, my name is Diane Thorne. I would like to know if Richmond Community Schools will be having vaccine clinics at the schools. I spoke this afternoon to Mr. Andrew Pax, the health director, is also calling him the health officer of the Macomb County Health Department. He stated this afternoon that Macomb County is already starting to partner with local schools in the county, just like Oakland, Oakland County is doing, to start these clinics. And he stated that these vaccine clinics are optional for the schools to have at the school district. And Mr. Walmsley, I'm just wondering if that's how, if, you know, Macomb County Health Department has reached out to you about these and what was your response? And if you were also told if these were optional? And then in the event that you're getting pressured to have one, I think I would highly consider trying to send out a survey to the parents to see if they even want one. However, I think that this should not be done on school property during school hours and without legal guardians and parents present. I'm very concerned about children getting vaccinated. And then just like who would be administering these vaccines and what, what they potentially say to the students. I can see, you know, students being scared about like if they say certain things and getting coerced into getting it. And then I also would like to know if there will be any information distributed, discussed, or assembly of source to the children at elementary, middle, or high school, presented to the kids about vaccines and COVID information? And then are you hiring for a pediatrician in the school? LaVon just did this, which is also part of Whitmore's plan. Again, it was brought up in past board meetings, these clinics, or past board meetings, presentations that Michigan Student Republic planned by Whitmore that came out in May. So many things are, that I just said are in this. And so I'm just wondering, are you going to stand up and say no? Some of the things that were in there, engage local pediatricians regularly to offer educational presentations, to offer mobile health clinics, to offer immunizations, provide education about the COVID-19 vaccination based on CDC guidance, make vaccine opportunities available, maximize and create common information systems to facilitate dialogue between school nurses and primary care providers, and telehealth between school nurses and pediatricians. And I just want to, you know, like this is, this decision between getting your child vaccinated, it's between parent and their doctor, it's a personal choice. You know, people will feel differently all about this, and I just don't think it should be brought into the school system.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda McLeod.
I'm sorry, McLeod.
Amanda McLeod. So I'm tired, and I'm sure you are too. So I'll try to make it to the point. Last year, parents and boards were bounced around by politicians, political agendas, specific interest groups. We've had to sift through very unclear legal language and just ever-changing senseless COVID policy that's designed to confuse. The chaos seems to be part of the plan, and the guidelines are meant to divide. And it feels like needing room, everyone into compliance. But law is law, and mandate is a mandate, and guidance and recommendations are recommendations. So it's very unclear to the parents, maybe what's going on. So as a parent, taxpayer, voter, and stakeholder, I'm asking the board tonight for truth and full transparency regarding the quarantine guidelines, contact tracing guidelines, and testing. Asking, we are asking you to show, Bridget and parents, the actual documentation that gives the school the legal authority to carry out this H, this Health Department guidance and legally enforce any of these Health Department recommendations on our children. I respectfully ask you to show us the law that grants us the school this authority. So Governor Whitmore's emergency orders were officially rescinded on June 2021. October 15th, 2021, the standing order for COVID-19 testing was rescinded. Macomb County currently has no public health orders or mandates on masking or quarantine. So after exhausting, exhaustive research for answers for truth for our children, we cannot find one single mandate that gives the school the legal authority to force the kids into quarantine compliance. The school has not shown parents where our children are actually in imminent danger to the health or lives of individuals in the state, and that the school must and can require quarantine and continual testing. There is currently no state of emergency order in Macomb County. Outside of school, kids are not health threat. They're filling stadiums, restaurants, stores. But these same kids are dangerous when they're in school. Doesn't make sense. I think you all know it doesn't make sense. And we're going along with it. So parents need legal advice to sort through and understand the school policy. So I will share with you what we were advised. If your county does not have a public health order issued, but is simply putting out quarantine guidance or recommendations, then that means your school is taking it upon themselves to unlawfully deprive your child the right to a free public education, their right to due process of law. And due process of law meaning that they have a right to go in front of a judge and tell their side of the story before quarantine. The school is denying your children their right to life, liberty, and happiness, liberty meaning freedom. So no one can force you to stay in your house for 10 days and give up your right to a free education and freedom.
Your three, no, sorry, your three minutes are up. Does anybody want to?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Wait a minute, her name's not Diane.
What is that?
No, you said you yielded your time to Diane. That's not, yeah.
So, oh, it's Amanda.
My name's just, just to make it.
Yeah, I do, I do. Okay. So, uh, so basically, no one can force you to stay in your house for 10 days and give up, give your child to give up their right to education and their freedom just because the school thinks you might maybe get sick. There's no law that they are filing. There is no legal authority that gives them the permission to do that. And there's no enforcement that can be used against you for not filing these unlawful, senseless demands. That's what's told us. This is why parents are winning court cases across, again, in Michigan, against school districts who have quarantined healthy kids in so far fifteen cases in county. The schools are breaking the law by forcing healthy kids into quarantine without legal authority. So anyone can go into a store, break the law by stealing. But if the store does not press charges and take the thief to court, then the man will continue to come into the store and break the law. So I'm asking you tonight to please just remember who you are, why you ran for the school board. Is this the kind of change you envisioned? Are these policies helping or hurting the children? Are they hurting the school community? Are they helping? Are they flourishing under this? Or has it come to your realization that this isn't about protecting the children at all? I know you guys have a lot of political pressure on your shoulders. I understand. You've been put in hard places. I understand that. You're parents, I understand that. But we have nobody else to ask. You are the stopgap for us. That's it. It's hard. So I'm asking for you to please provide transparency to all the stakeholders involved, that would be including us, and just to do the right thing, even when it's hard. Thank you. Thank you.
I am Tracy Bartel, a resident of Columbus Township. I served on the Board of Education at the time that Brian Walmsley was hired. We went through an extensive interview process. We narrowed a field of over twenty candidates. We did district visits and spoke with many people who worked with the final two candidates, and we polled the employees here in the district. And when all the facts were on the table, it was a seven-zero vote that Brian was the top candidate and the best choice. It was a legitimate, professional, well-run process. Mr. Hill, Mr. Toit, Mr. Oderkirk, Mr. Rydell, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Teltow, and I unanimously agreed Brian would be the one to progress the district forward. We got exactly what we expected. He has moved the district forward, and his success, the district's success, is rooted in his ethics, his character, his excellent work ethic, and extreme levels of knowledge and giftedness. At the last board meeting, I was beyond disheartened to hear the things that Mr. Walmsley is enduring these days. Also unfortunate, I was not surprised to hear his report. I feared the moment that I saw four of you choose to run together as a team in the last election cycle, that you would push forward your own personal agenda, ignoring what is in the best interest of the safety and education of children. And all that I heard Mr. Walmsley say in his statement at the last meeting validates my fear. It appears that some of you are on a mission of your own, separate from the acceptable and prescribed role of the Board of Education and anyone who chooses to take the seat you are sitting in to manipulate, to bully and bring about revenge or vendetta, create an unfair work environment, should be removed from the seat of power. Also inferred at the last meeting, there are apparent problems with how some of the members of this board chooses to operate when you're away from this table. And if this is fact, the case, unethical choices are being made, they must come out to the public and not be kept behind closed doors. Breaking the law, if that is happening, is a recallable offense. And those of us in this community, when we find out that's the truth, must then do our jobs and plan a recall movement. I request that any wrongdoings be revealed to the public at an open meeting very soon. Board members, your role in this education system is twofold. With tax dollars allotted to this district, you formulate and approve a budget, and you approve the necessary policies that fit with the priorities made within that budget. Those are your two jobs. And when done extremely well, there is no time for personal agenda, no time for bullying or mistreatment of the superintendent or any other employees of the district. I know that there are countless...
I yield my minutes to Tracy Bartel.
There are countless employees, countless employees in this district that work tirelessly and exceptionally every day to teach children that bullying is not the way that human beings treat one another. So every time any of you make choices from this seat of power that you are in to take this path of revenge or disrespect, you in fact disrespect the work of those who are teaching and working every day because you're teaching children in this community that the opposite is actually true. Bullying is totally fine. Some of you have made despicable choices, and some of you have remained silent while those choices have been made. All of it is unacceptable. I'm asking you to be better people. I'm asking for you to know your role and your responsibilities. I'm asking for you to follow the law. And I am asking for you to follow a different example of leadership. Because the children, and their families, and the employees in this district deserve better.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Shelby Pollard, been up here multiple times. We've not known one another. I have a few concerns. I had addressed it also with Mrs. Manguni in the office at the elementary school. But I also wanted to come here and address it with you guys as well. If you take, write down notes, take my questions, email me back. But if you find, you can write my email on the sheet here. My son is in the second grade. He's an amazing kid, not just because he's my kid or anything like that, but he's, he's honest, he's trustworthy, and, you know, he's not going to sit here and tell me stories and lies and stuff like that. My mother had came to school one day to pick him up, on the 26th of October, to be exact, and got in the car, and he was in absolute tears. He proceeded to tell Mama that the Health Department had came in and were giving hearing and vision testing. Okay, hearing and vision testing is, it happens. Us parents know what happens a lot of times in schools. It's caught at this age group to see if children need glasses or anything else is done. And it can be appreciated a hundred percent. I'm not saying this is, this is a bad thing. What I have a problem with is that, according to my son, a Health Department person came down, grabbed him out of his classroom by himself, walked him down to another room, looked at my son and said, "You need to put this mask on because it protects me, and if you don't do it, you can't get a test." Well, he's eight. He's not going to fight the adults in the room. So my son last year was exempt from face masks. He wore a face shield. We had doctors notice and everything. My son has a medical condition that where he cannot wear face masks. This woman has, or person, I don't know if it was a man or a female, had no idea of any of his medical, anything, and yet was forcing my child to wear this. Now, the Health Department has now come in large schools, and they have been allowed in with open arms and not watched. And what's next? Today, it's a simple mask with a hearing and vision test. And tomorrow was something different because Whitmore's rolling out her plans to put clinics for vaccines for our children. Our children, especially in elementary schools, like that, you're lucky. They, most of them don't even know their phone number, your mom's phone number, or address or something like that because they're still learning these things. So let alone to make medical decisions or anything like that. It's, they don't understand it. That's why us parents should be making these decisions. Now, I called the school. I asked the office, was there a notice sent home that stated that the hearing and vision tests were being had? Everybody said, no, there was no notice sent home. I don't know if this was something that fell through the cracks, which happens, and I do understand, but it's not always right, especially given the circumstances and stuff like that. I was also then given the opportunity to take my child off of that list, which I immediately did, but now the damage had already been done. I want to send my child to school. This is a great environment for him and to have his friends, his peers, and everything like that. Us parents keep asking the same questions over and over and over again, and we feel like we're not getting anywhere. It's, it's, it's very difficult, and it's hard, and we're trying to do right by everything, and we're trying to work with you guys. And when we ask a question, we feel like we just get this blanketed statement. We just, I get it.
I'm sorry, your three minutes are up. That's all. Thank you.
So hopefully, we just do the right thing and watch our, work out for our children.
Hi, my name is Candice Cungham. And I too, like Mrs. Bartels was saying, have just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the last meeting. I did feel also that it was very disheartening, some of the words that Mr. Walmsley was saying. I'm not sure that it was any of our business to know all that, but it very much took my mind in a whole nother way of thinking that is much more concerning, that we have so much more going on right now, so much more than whatever you guys are fighting about, I don't know. But if it's not about this COVID blueprint, Whitmore's blueprint, that we have been trying to tell you guys about since May, it shouldn't matter. I honestly, right now, it is, this is all playing out, and it appears that you guys are behind the able with all of it. You don't, you're not transparent with us about how much you know, what you don't know, what you do know. Another part of the last meeting, and I'm not sure, Margaret, you were talking about not wanting to talk to your lawyers about, you seem like very pushy against doing that. And right now, it should be all about the lawyers. You guys should be contacting your lawyers because you've got moms back here that are staying up late. We have real jobs, and we're learning all of the laws, all of what is a mandate, what is a, you know, real law, what can be. And you guys are, we feel like we're doing everything at this point. And you guys really should be consulting. I mean, these are changing. Every week, there's things changing. I don't know if you guys are on these parent pages, but there's a lot of people, it's not just bashing you guys, by the way. I mean, we, geez, two, four of us went to a prayer meeting yesterday. You know, three, two, hour and a half away, and we prayed for all of you guys. I mean, we're trying to work with you, and I hope you guys are on those parent pages because there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that lawyers are doing. If they're getting answers for you, it would benefit you guys. So if you're not on those pages learning, you should be. And really listening to these gals because they know what they're talking about. You know, back in May, when we first read this Whitmore plan, it's so crazy and far out there that nobody could have ever thought. And I think watching all these months roll through, watching your replies, your facial expressions are like, no, that'll never happen, that'll... But then the next month, we're sitting here, and it's happening. So, you know, like she's saying, you know, the Health Department and the schools doing masking and all this, and you guys are okay with it. It is okay now, but if you really read that plan, it's going to be much more than that within a few short months here. It's rolling out fast, and I hope you guys are on it. I pray that you guys are on it. And just remember that we're here for you to help you. And I didn't, one meeting a couple ago, you guys talked about maybe getting with one of the moms and kind of using, picking their brains and starting a little board or something. I thought I remembered.
I don't recall. What?
You know, to come, well, then I'm suggesting it, okay? If, I thought that it did get talked about, but I would like to suggest it, that you guys kind of hear what's going on, if you're not already. And Mr. Walmsley, if you're not already meeting with other superintendents and knowing what is going on out there, where everybody lies in our county. I mean...
I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
Yes, that's fine. Okay. I'm going to leave my email address because I would like a reply. because I would like to reply about some of this. This is being done, okay? Because from what I understand, there's, nobody's getting back to these moms either, which is another problem. Thank you for your time and I will continue to keep praying for all of us.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is a superintendent and legislative update.
If I could start, and I will, I will get back with each one of these parents, but I just want to say for the record, as the board, I am on a weekly meeting with every superintendent in this county with the county health department every single Wednesday from 12 to approximately 2:00 in the afternoon. So I am aware of what's going on in other districts in McComb County. Second is, as the county health department, health department, it has been discussed at the superintendent's meeting if any district willing or want to host vaccine clinics, they are willing to partner with you. I have not, nor do I plan on asking to partner. I will distribute information to parents to give it to their option if they choose to get a vaccine or not, but I'm not planning on hosting any clinics. The second one is, you're actually right. There is no executive order or emergency order. But in August, I think it was the 23rd, again at the last board meeting, I referenced, and I don't have it in front of me, so I can get that to you. There is a health department law. It's under the health department codes where we deal with quarantining students for measles and chicken pox and so forth. And in the law, it says the health department shall make the guidance for us to follow. Our health department has chosen the guidance. And in the guidance, in what is originally released, it said schools should quarantine. And I took that position as I did consult with legal attorneys and I do on a regular basis. We left it up to the parents. I believe on September 9th, I think it was the 9th, right before school started, the health department changed that language to schools must quarantine. And bottom of our return to learning plan, it gives, "So we are following the health department, under the health department law, is the order." And I can get you the exact number. If you watched the previous board meeting, it was on that one. A big one, but I will, I will get back with the other ones more specific. Those are the notes that I just wrote down. Chris Reiner, director of athletics, reports that the middle school sports are underway. Today, our eighth grade girls' basketball team played at home. And over the next several days, we have seventh and eighth grade girls' basketball playing home and away. I encourage you to check the athletic website if you're interested in going to any of those games. We also have coming up, I believe it's on the 16th, the boys' middle school wrestling is at home. It's a B-WAC quad event. So again, check the website for those. We have a half day this Friday. It is records day, end of the first quarter. We are more than 25% through the school year. I think we've done a pretty remarkable job, especially since the data that we've shown is, I think if you take into consideration, we've at least maintained or gone up just a little in the event of going in and out of school, quarantining kids and trying to maintain programs. All three buildings, you heard, did excellent professional development. I had an opportunity to visit each of the buildings. It really hit home with me and the dedication that our staff have and want to improve instruction in the classroom. So I'm looking forward to the continuation. I think the full day PD is, I think, I believe was a good move on the district and the negotiation of the calendar to provide the time for teachers and staff to get together and so forth. Middle school, tonight was our first home game and the new concession was used. So the bond project that was put, instead of having to set up a table in the hallway and, you know, so forth, they could actually use the new concessions. So I'm looking forward to hearing how that went. They are again doing their veterans' day ceremonies. They are scheduling it virtually for the upcoming Veterans Day. As a district, we are looking at our policy for visitors for beginning second card marking, which would be a week from today. You know, based on the data that we're seeing and collecting, right now, we only allow visitors that have an educational interest in the class. So we're looking at allowing other visitors. So that's coming down the pipe. Food service. Candy provided me this information, but I want to give the hats off to our food service staff. And I just want to read a little statistic here that I don't know if you're aware of. The month of September, our food service staff, which is 11 ladies and gentlemen and a director, served 2,863 breakfasts, 11,253 lunches, for a total of 14,116 meals the month of September. That is 1,281 more meals this year than we served in September of 20. And keep in mind, we started a week later. So these ladies and gentlemen have really carried the mail and deserve our applaud because of the amount of food and breakfasts that they're serving. I'm very proud of them. Transportation, we don't always get to report on some of these areas, but I think it's important that they were excited to start their school year off with a new bus that was purchased. It arrived in July. And if you walked in the Good Old Days Parade, that was the bus, that was the brand new bus this year. They have begun doing academic field trips again after pretty much 18 months of not doing them. So that's exciting. They've taken kids to Pine River and Goodell's Nature Center, Blake's Cider Mill, Russell Smith Factory, and a high school Spanish group down to St. Age Church in Detroit regarding conversations about the Day of the Dead that just occurred. We've had 11 athletic field trips so far this year, away games, which is, if you recall, we've had a very, we've had a lot of problems doing those athletic field trips. So we're making stride to be able to have transportation for athletics in the evening. So if you know anybody who's a bus driver, we are hiring bus drivers. So we more than interview. When our buses were sitting idle, we had neighboring districts ask us for help and our bus driver stepped up so that their students also could have a great experience. So Karen Montgomery took a group from another district down to Groseal so they could play their football game. She had a great time. It's a great group of kids that she experiences, experienced. And so I just want to thank her for stepping up to the plate and helping. We didn't have a need for our drivers here that particular day and so she was able to help out one of our neighboring districts. Richmond Community Schools will once again be participating in the City of Richmond Santa Parade, which is being held on Saturday, December 4th. We have a school bus that will be one of the parade floats. It'll be decorated in lights and so forth. There'll be an invitation going out to staff if they'd like to join us on the bus, as well as board members. It kicks off their tree lighting ceremony. We are excited. You know, this was not done last year due to the pandemic, so we are excited again to participate in the city's efforts to bring this back. Again, it kicks off the tree lighting ceremony that year. Enrollment numbers, we had count day, we have certified count day. Just to give you a perspective, head count, our ECSE through grade 12, we're at 1,556 head counts. That's not FTEs, it's actual bodies. When you add three and four year olds in the Great Start Readiness Program, we are up to a total of 1,666 students. Our official FTE certified head count that was submitted is we are up 46.98 FTEs over last year. So our numbers are up. Legislative update. Hearings begin on what was called prohibited public funds and due to dues. This past Tuesday, House Education Committee began testimony on House Bill 5424, which would prohibit school districts from spending local, state or federal funds on any dues to membership organizations, specifically education associations or trade unions. Under the bill, a board would have to create and implement a policy by January 1st, 2023 that would prohibit public school funds from being used on membership dues for certain individuals, including, but not limited to, superintendents, principals, board members, central office staff, and sure. You've probably received information from the Michigan Association of School Boards that testified on the beneficial benefit of having membership dues to professional organizations. The information that we receive from our memberships regarding bills that are secretly introduced by the House or Senate in the wee hours of the night, just go back to the right to work legislation and the grade three law, would have dramatic impact on our organizations. Not from the aspect that I'm necessarily concerned regarding the Michigan School Board Associations, which we would be prohibited from joining, or the Michigan Association of School Superintendents and Administrators. But I'm also more concerned with regarding bills. This bill would affect our participation in athletic conference, music association, like the NSBY, subject area specific organizations, like the Teachers of Mathematics and so forth. None of that would be allowed to be paid for by public school dollars. So I would ask everybody to contact your legislators and regarding the concern that I have, as well as you should. It is Bill 5424. The House Bill 5097 was introduced last Tuesday afternoon. It was passed in the House of Representatives in a controversial five to zero vote. We wouldn't know about this if it wasn't for our associations. This bill would prohibit any form of race, gender stereotyping from being included in the core curriculum. If passed, it would prohibit the teaching of any historical events or anti-bias training. After one Democratic member was asked, was not allowed to speak on the bill, the Democratic members refused to vote on the bill. That left 55 Republican legislators voting yes on the bill, just enough to pass the bill. I strongly oppose this bill, not for the necessarily, whatever position you have on these topics, but the decision of what should be taught in the conversations that should be happening in our classroom should not be a legislative decision. It should be this board and adopted by this board, which is a representation of our community. So I would also encourage you to contact your legislators on this bill. Too many items have been taken out of the control of local school boards and this is just one more attempt to make it a legislative mandate and not this board's decision. The last legislative update I have, and I'm just updating you that we have knowledge of this. We're not doing anything with it until we get more guidance. Last September, President Biden announced a path out, path out of the pandemic plan. This plan would require employers with 100 or more employees to mandate that their workers are either vaccinated or tested on a weekly basis for COVID-19. Since then, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, often referred to OSHA, has been working on implementing the language. Last week, we received notice and confirmation that the emergency temporary standards was announced, ETA, by OSHA and the U.S. Department of Labor. Under the ETA, employers, including Michigan's school districts, must ensure that their employees are fully vaccinated by January 4th, 2022. That's less than two months away. Or are being tested weekly to provide the results to their employer. Also by December 5th, 2021, which is less than a month away. And we've received no guidance on this at this point, other than notification that it's coming. Districts will need to verify the vaccination status of their employees and have a plan in place to comply with other requirements outlined, like paid time off to get the vaccination and masking requirements for unvaccinated workers. The Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration is expected to adopt these standards within the next two weeks. As stated, the plan applies to any employers, including school districts, with 100%, or excuse me, 100 or more employees as of December 5th. We have approximately 130 employees. When you add on top of that coaches, Schedule Bs, we're over 200 employees. We are still working through the order. We're waiting for guidance on this. So I'm not, if people hear about it, we are kind of in a holding pattern. This will be further conversation should we have to implement things like that with each of the union and collective bargaining agreements. Because I believe, and I don't want to speak for them, but I believe it's a change in working conditions, which is a requirement to be negotiated. Now, with that, we have to also abide by the law, should this be a law. So I just want to put it on this board's radar because there potentially could be policies that have to be implemented and how we're going to implement this. So with that, I have no further comments.
Thank you. Okay, this time we have public comments, our comments from the board. I'll start down with Kyle.
I got one.
Danielle?
I just wanted to say that we sent out from our subcommittee the staff survey to all the staff, teachers, administrators, support staff, everybody. It was a little bit over 200 people. We had about 50% reply on that. And I just want to say thanks to those teachers and support staff. Judging by the comments, everybody from bus drivers to people in the cafeteria, to teachers, to administrators. So thanks for taking that seriously and giving us some feedback to work with.
Angela?
I'm also, thank you.
Marker?
Nope.
Bridgette?
Okay, I just want to add to what Danielle was saying. At our next board meeting, we will be sharing some of the results and things that we found from our survey. I also would like to personally thank the elementary school and the PTA for their great Trump retreat. I was amazed at how many kids, I think they said about 800 kids rolled through there on that Friday night. So it was, it was a really good time. And then the board received more training, the Open Meetings Act tonight by the district attorney. And we are going to continue to work and make sure that we are in compliance with that act. Okay, being there, no other business, the board will adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. I knew I missed something. Sorry, 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 sorry. Okay, we, I need a motion to approve the overnight and extended student trips.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the overnight extended student trips to DeFiance College, December 17 and 18, 2021, New Lowthrup High School, January 7th and 8th, 2022, and Lowell High School, January 21st and 22nd, 2022, as presented at the October 25th, 2021 Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation. Should it say, should it say that it's for the wrestling team somewhere?
The background references to wrestling.
The motion doesn't need to say it? Okay.
It's worth it. It's still supportive.
Thank you, Kyle.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries now.
The rest wrestlers.
There is no further business, the board will adjourn at 10:25.